Ready? There we are. The City of Riverbank City Council LRA Board Meetings are now in session today as October 25th, 2022. It is 6:00 PM. Let's rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ma'am, standing, please.
Father God, we just come before you this evening and we're so grateful and thankful for the City of Riverbank. Lord, we give you all the glory and honor and praise, Father, for all that you're doing. Lord, I pray that tonight, Lord, as we discuss business and go through this calendar, Lord, I just pray, Father, that you would give us wisdom, that we would be in one mind and one accord. I pray, God, that as we share our concerns, that, Lord, we would do it with a heart that has Riverbank's best interests at heart. And, Father, for this council, as they make decisions, God, that they would do the same, Lord, as what's best for Riverbank, and that, Lord, at the end of the day, we would all come together and continue to do our part in making this great city, the City of Action, Riverbank, California. We thank you for it, in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Please be seated. This meeting is being held in accordance with the California Government Code Section 5495-3, Subdivision Echo of the Ralph &amp; Brown Act, California Government Code 54950, SEC. The federal Americans with disability, while this meeting is being physically open to the public, given the state of emergency regarding the threat of COVID-19, members of the public may also participate and comment via Zoom virtual platform. Refer to the last page of the agenda for participation information. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez? Councilmember Barbara Martinez? Vice Mayor Campbell?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here. There will be no changes to the agenda. Any council or authority member or staff has direct conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item is to be considered, is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we're going to go directly to public comments. Are there any public comment? There's been no public comment. I have now wished at the end of public comment to make a comment on staffing. You know, it's very difficult to find staffing. We're struggling trying to find some planners right now. But one of the things I would like to address is some of the longevities. And I'd like to say to Maricela, you've been with us 25 years. And this is a surprise to her and a surprise to a lot. So in both the quality of your work and the quality of your heart that makes a great role model and an invaluable individual to the City of Riverbank, today you are celebrated for everything you have accomplished.
This is what I like to do, and I like things like. Come on, council, gather around. This is your city manager.
Let's enjoy.
All right. Come on in. Marley? All right.
Look at that nice-looking bunch right there.
Nice. No. No. Look at his finger.
Thank you.
All right. And again, thank you, Maricela. Thank you, Gabby, for surprising her. That should be reflected duly in your next evaluation. All right, we're going to move on to the consent calendar. Consisting of Item 9-1, waived readings. 9-2, approval of October 11th, 2022, City Council Local Redevelopment Authority Board meetings. Item 9-3, a resolution authorizing the city manager to sign the memorandum of understanding with Stanislaus Regional 911. Item 9-4, a resolution authorizing the purchase of 6825 Third Street APN 132-010-014 and 6813 Third Street APN 132-010-062 for $350,000 from the American Rescue Plan Act Fund 136. Item 9-5, adopt a resolution to award bid for the Stanislaus and Seventh Street Valley Gutter and Curb Ramp Project to Sinclair General Engineering Construction, Inc., and authorize execution of future change orders. Item 9-6, a resolution to approve the employment agreement between the City of Riverbank and Sue Fitzpatrick as Director of Parks and Recreation and authorized the city manager to execute the agreement. Do we have any one wishing to comment on or pull the consent calendar? Okay. So any other? Any public comments on the consent calendar minus 9-3? Seeing none, I bring it back for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar with the exception of 9-3.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve the consent calendar minus 9-3 in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 9-3, you have questions?
Yes, I do. So I wanted to know, and probably those that have read this wanted to know or may want to know about Oakdale, having the same kind of equipment, do we tie into the plan that they, you know, whatever it is that they have? So I just want clarification on that for the public.
So the City of Oakdale has their own dispatch. They currently do not use SR 911 as their dispatch center. So this would not currently tie into their needs. Now, if in the future, the City of Riverbank was exploring an opportunity to use the City of Oakdale as their dispatch facility, technically, the memorandum of understanding would allow us the ability to attach our own communication equipment to that as well.
Thanks. Just wanted clarification for everybody, because I know probably somebody's out there asking the same question. So, thank you.
We have the ability to use the tower and the building.
Okay, thanks.
Any other comments on 9-3?
Like to make a motion that we approve item 9.3.
And I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve item 9-3 in a second. Do we? Now, roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes 4-0.
Item 10, public hearing. Appeal hearing for a city issued code violation, a building section 153.033 Bravo 3, R1 fence requirement.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The item before you today is with regards to an appeal that was submitted to the Planning Commission and was upheld at their last meeting. The appellant has decided to bring this forward to the City Council for consideration. And so we have a brief presentation for you with a statement of the facts. You could enable screen sharing, please. So the property in question that we will be reviewing tonight is 3106 High Street. The property owner at this location has installed a six-foot chain link fence in the front and side street setbacks. Unfortunately, this does violate Section 153.033 of our Riverbank Municipal Code. This particular section of the municipal code focuses on fences, walls, and hedges, and retaining walls that should be no higher than three feet when located in the required front yard setback area and in the required setback area along the side street of a corner lot. So I will show you a photograph in a moment of that particular property, and it is located on a corner lot. An inspection was conducted and a notice of violation was sent to the property owner in August of this year. A second inspection was conducted, and a second notice of violation was then sent two weeks afterwards. The property owner has filed an appeal, as mentioned before, and it was heard and upheld by the Appeals Board on September 20th. And then the property owner is now appealing that decision to the City Council. So this is a photo of the original site as it was previous to the installation of the fence located on the corner of High Street and First Street. This is an aerial view of that particular property, and you're going to note that we also included some markings to delineate where the sidewalk begins and then the 10-foot setback that's required to be abided by when you install a fence for reference. This is just a photograph of the alley distance or a view from the alleyway. And then this is just a photograph of the view down First Street, heading towards High Street. And you'll see that the fence is located directly to our sidewalk. And then this is a photograph from the front portion of the property. And then looking towards the alleyway. And then just one more photograph as you're looking at it across the street from First Street. And so per the municipal code, the property owner is required to keep the six-foot height of the fence, but move it back out of that 10-foot setback area that was delineated. And second, to reduce the height of the fence to four feet per that same section of the code, which is allowable for properties that are located on a corner lot for transparent fences. And that is the end of the statement of the facts as the citation currently holds. We do have Donna via Zoom in case there are any questions that the City Council may have with regards to our Riverbank Municipal Code or any other inspections that were performed by her staff.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions before I open it for a hearing? Okay. Call this hearing to order. Right now, I'd like to do a little bit of procedures. Each person who testifies must take an oath administered by the clerk. Each side will have seven minutes to present. The board may decide to provide additional time if required. The city representative will go first and make present any written, physical, or oral testimony. The board may question the city representative about the presentation and finding. The appellate will go second, may present any written, physical, or oral testimony relevant to the citation. The City Council may question the appellate about their presentation in response. Each party will be given an opportunity to offer a final rebuttal or any final comments with a time limit of three minutes. At the end of the testimony, the hearing will be closed, and the City Council will deliberate. The City Council, by majority vote, will then determine whether to uphold or dismiss the citation. The appellate will receive the decision in writing from the city clerk within seven business days of the hearing. We will now hear the appeal of citation number 2022-0906 in the name of Kimberly Davison. The city will have seven minutes to present its case. Do we have Mrs. Davison here? Thank you. Okay, so the city will go first.
So the staff report that was just provided to you was the city's opportunity to present the facts.
Ma'am, have you had a chance to take a look at the staff report? No, the written staff report. Okay, it's published. I was just wondering if you had a chance to read it. Okay.
So, Mayor, the staff report included her appeal, and then it just included, for reference, for the City Council, the section of the municipal code related to.
Tom, may I go down there just for a second to show her the report?
So, as Maricela said, the staff report includes your statements, your evidence, the evidence you provided that was shared with the council, and the presentation that was just presented.
Okay, so if you want to come on up, and would you administer an oath? I want to make sure that you have all the information that we are going to discuss.
Can you please state your name and raise your right hand?
Kimberly Davidson.
Please repeat after me. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give before this board is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please give your statement.
Oh, just.
Go ahead.
This is nerve-wracking. I'm hoping you've all read my appeal. And I added something to the appeal before you that I didn't present to the other appeal board. And that is, and I hope, I think it gives me some legal standing, and it's in those documents I presented about underground digging. The confirmation ticket for underground digging. And why didn't the city respond to that? Every other agency did, and that would have been the time. Then you would have seen where I was going to put the fence, and we could have avoided all of this. And now it's going to be really a financial hardship to move the fence back. In fact, I'll just have to take it down. I can't afford to have it put up again. It's these papers. I hope you looked at them. When Donna first came out, as soon as I got the citation, I, within 30 minutes, I called the city, and two of the city employees came out. And then I asked to speak to Donna, and she came out, and I asked her about this 811 number, this underground digging. And she didn't know what I was talking about. So I forgot about it, and I put my appeal before the appeal board. And then I got thinking about it. I went back online, and I looked at these papers, where PG&E and MID and everyone else, and that would be on page. The page three there. No conflict, no conflict, area marked. And because I went out, I had to go out there. Do you know what 811 is? Does clarification need it?
No.
Oh, okay. And I went out there and marked everything, and the city never showed up. And it was for digging fence posts. The person that was going to put up my fence said, you know, you need to call 811. And I said, what's 811? You know, I know 911. Then they explained, so I called, went online, registered, and it wasn't until after the fact that I realized the city had never come out. They didn't do their due diligence, bottom line. They didn't do their job. And I'd like a response to that.
So, ma'am, you have this moment to give your statement of your facts, and then once that's terminated, then the city will respond.
Okay, yeah, that's basically it. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. For the city, ma'am, when someone asks if I can build a house, does not give them permission to build a house. If you say to utilities, I'm going to build a fence, that's okay, then one makes, they're protecting their utilities. That does not give permission to build a fence or the house or any other structure. That goes through a process with the city. Same thing with any other modifications that may happen to have. So do we have someone that will give the city's presentation with knowledge that clarification on our responsibilities, once someone is going to, it was not a request, like it is in the city ordinance, to change the height of the fence, change the construction of a fence, or do an encroachment?
So we do have Michael Rydel, our Public Director, who can give a response with regards to the question on 811, which is the underground service alerts, which we abide by. So I'll let him give that particular response.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So we will receive an 811 request for a dig, but we only address what's in the public right of way. We don't address what's on private property. In this instance, this fence was on private property, so we wouldn't concern ourselves with that. We would go out if the homeowner contacted us to make sure if they had questions about maybe where their water line is or their sewer line could be and that kind of stuff, but we wouldn't mark it on private property.
But I believe her comments and questions were, if you came out to take a look at the dig, who makes the determination whether or not that dig, that fence, is appropriate?
We wouldn't come out, period, to mark, because it wouldn't be on the public right of way. So in other words, we wouldn't respond to the 811 ticket.
But had she reached out to the city with regards to where the location of the fence should have been and the height, that would have been our building and planning department that would have assisted her with those questions. And they would not have gone through a permit process, given the height of the fence or the location of the fence at that point in time with regards to taking the setbacks into consideration. It would just be a confirmation of what those setbacks were.
And my department handles the 811 tickets, so.
Right, okay. Any questions?
Did a contractor build your fence? A fence contractor or somebody built it? Okay, just curious. Thank you.
Okay. All right, before I ask you to come back on up, I'm just going to summarize, if I may. You asked 811 whether or not your digging would interfere with utilities. That was the answers you were given. No one addressed whether or not the fence was within specifications or was going to be encroaching on the encroaching on the.
On the easement.
Easement. So what do we do? The comments are, you are in violation of the ordinance. So what do we do? Do we have you tear it down and reconstruct it? It's a financial hardship. If you lowered the fence by two feet, that would meet the requirement, correct?
For the front yard. It would still not meet the setback.
For the setback. And the setback is on the side?
It is on the side. There's.
You need that setback. The reason for the easement and the setback, that if PG&E needs to do a gas repair line, doesn't need your permission to go and dig it. But now they're going to have to destroy your fence to get in there and do their work. Same thing with electrical lines or cable, cable TV, or whatever utility lines that are running adjacent to your property in the easement. So what is the solution? The solution would be, easiest one, is to come into compliance. The most difficult thing is for us to redo your work at a cost that may not, may be a burden. So is there any other solutions for this? We've been dealing with this for a while throughout the city. We need to come up with a solution that's citywide. Allowing people to encroach on the easement is unacceptable. But people believe that this is my property, I can do anything I want with it, to a certain extent. I've been struggling with this for a lot of people who have made the error of claiming, well, I can put my fence anywhere I want. Even though they have gone through the same process you have gone through, 811, building fences, one person has a fence that is seven feet tall above its highest portion of the land, which is the code, but the fence is three feet below grade of their highest point. So that's actually a 10-foot fence. And it's on an easement. So we have to correct all of these, and we have to do it in such a manner that, A, we educate the public, B, we figure out a way, case by case, how to come away. But in the long run, each one has to come in compliance. When we deliberate, is it publicly? Is it just publicly? Okay. Well, whatever the resolution is tonight, or the solution tonight, we will not be, I don't, I won't speak for the other three. I would say that we'd be a little bit more caring on how we go about each one to get them into compliance. If that's understood. Okay. Is there anyone having a question or before we move to just talking about it?
Just got a couple of comments.
Let's ask questions, then comment, so we can influence everyone.
Okay. You said that there was a contractor that put the fence up. Well, I personally think that the contractor, if he's been building fences, should have been responsible, because that's his job. I know that we had some problems with the city and whatnot, but he really needed to double-check on it, per se. And on the basis of that, I would say if something were to be done, you need to contact your contractor that built it, because he should have had the knowledge to be able to do that if he's been in the business very long. That's the one thing that I really thought about, you know, a whole lot. And that would help you relieve you of responsibility rebuilding the area that needs to be done, because that contractor is liable to make sure that it is in the right place. That's his job. Thank you.
Don't. I'm. Okay, I will reopen. Come on up. Make your comment just briefly now, because you gave it up. I was bringing it back to the council. You do. I thought you were done with your arguments. Okay. No, 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 please, please do not. So you had no other additional comments. Why don't we go for your closing or your rebuttal for this? You already gave that. Yep. All right, I'm going to authorize it. You have three minutes or less for your rebuttal to all. You have three minutes or less for your rebuttal to all the comments that have been made.
Well, this isn't gonna win me any votes, but I want to address what Cal said. And this is why I have not mentioned the contractor's name, I have refused to bring him into it. He was hesitant about where I wanted the fence. And I pointed to my neighbors across the street, and I pointed to my neighbors that way. I said, they're six feet, and they're right there on the sidewalk, and they've been that way for, the one was one to two years old. So I thought I was okay. What else do I want to say in two and a half minutes? Would it come, well, you know, you keep bringing up the easement and the utilities, but they said I could dig there and put fence posts there, so how would it be a problem for them? Would be one thing I, I would want to know. And I forgot. Oh, would you be open to a compromise? What if I removed that front part, so that the fence was just, came where the house was, remove that whole front part and put nothing there? And I'd also like you to consider what I said in my appeal, what a difficult, difficult property this is, to keep people off of, to keep it clean, to you know, I was there for thirty years, and the city came out and pruned those trees one time in thirty years. Those ugly trees that they put there in the sidewalk, one time. And then my gravel came down, came right out and removed all those dead trees on both sides of the sidewalk. I was glad for it, but it shouldn't have taken thirty years. I would also argue there's a ten-foot sidewalk there, you know? That's it. It's compelling to me, maybe not to you, thank you though, for hearing me.
Thank you again. Okay, I'm closing the public hearing. Okay, here's what we may do. The board may uphold or dismiss the citation based on the testimony presented. One of the things that I've discussed briefly with the city manager, and it's not on the city manager. But we have to be consistent in the way we provide our enforcement of, of code, code violations. And I understand you look at your neighbors, they're in violation. We are gonna have to start shifting our emphasis. We have to have more code enforcement out there. I believe we do. I believe that the reason for the code enforcement is for the safety and security of the residents. It's also the, the ability to keep the aesthetic appeal of the city of Riverbank, for those that determine that they don't need to do upkeep, or code enforcement plays a very important role in the way the city is viewed. And how do we, how do we correct all the errors? Your fence is well-constructed, and it's metal, it's not going to deteriorate. A lot of the wooden fences that are in the same predicament are going to deteriorate. Maybe we have a solution for that. But we have to come up with a solution for the entirety. My recommendation is that the board considers enforcing the code completely throughout the city. And while we're doing the survey on everyone that's out, we come up with a, a, a solution on how to enforce it. If we can do that. But again, I'm going to uphold what the planning commission did, but we will try to do some mitigation with that. My, that's my vote.
Yeah, this is, this is a tough one, the order, going through the ordinances. I've been on the council for four years, and I'm still learning all the ordinances as well, and trying to, try to be proactive and stay on top of all this stuff. But it is, you know, our due diligence, I know, I've been, I've sat with the city manager and could try, try to walk through like the process of how do we educate our residents, when they buy the home, right, they're setting up their utilities and they get some information about that. So there's one avenue of educating the public on what, you know, what can and can't be done on your own property, like the mayor had said. But based on the, on the evidence, I too will be upholding the decision. It is a violation, it is in the easement, so that's where it stands for me as well, but I, I would like us to, to be a little bit more proactive of educating the public on what we can and can't do. Like the fifty percent requirement of concrete in the front, so the water permeates down to the, to the aquifer, right? So stuff like that, I think we can do a better job as a city, but that's my opinion.
I too think that this is a very difficult decision to make, and that contractors need to know, and our residents need to tell the contractors evidently, that when you come into our city, or any city actually, and you want to build something, you need to go to the city to make sure that you're, you have the permits, that you're following the parameters, the codes, whatever it is that you need in order to build something. So it's not just, you know, the fence, it could be anything, actually, and people need to know that, our residents need to know that. So I uphold also, but it's, it's hard to, to come up with this decision. And I understand that Ms. Davidson has a lot of hardship, this will, you know, however, it needs to be fixed. I don't know if there's anything that we can do to try to help to get it fixed in this, in this situation, I, I really don't know. I don't know. But I'm, I am in favor of upholding the code also.
I agree with Councilmember Martinez, and also Councilmember Uribe, not to just duplicate it, because they both said exactly what I wanted.
I'll just quickly add it, and I know the, we as a council would like to, would like to have some workshops about some of the, some of the codes, some of the ordinances. We're, we're kind of seeing code enforcement receiving double the amount of citations. I, I do think we should have code enforcement out there a little bit more, being a little bit more proactive, but I would like to see that workshop sooner rather than later, so we can get a citywide solution going for this.
All right, thank you. At this time, since we all made a motion, I would like to call a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes, to uphold.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion to uphold passes four-zero.
If so, that the motion passes by four-zero vote, the citation is hereby upheld. The city clerk, city clerk will provide an appellate, the appellate with a written decision within seven business days. This appeals hearing is now closed. New business, eleven-point-one, a resolution to name Diamond Bar East Park Basin Bruin Park.
So Mayor Sue Fitzpatrick, our Director of Parks and Recreation, will provide the staff report on this item.
Feels different being on this side. Mayor, members of the council, the Parks Department has been working with LGI Homes and our planning department for a while on the basin at Diamond Bar East, and even though it is a basin, there are gonna be some amenities at the perimeter, which are gonna be a walking trail, some benches, and some fitness equipment. And so it's enough amenities to where we want to call it a park. And so the architect is working on the plans, and now we have to kind of give the park a name, because we want to give direction on signage. And since the basin is near the high school, what came to our mind, what suggested was to name it Bruin Park. So we wanted to present that resolution to the council, see if, if that, we were okay to go on with that name and give direction. The developer is gonna add some more to that basin at the top, he's gonna put a shade structure and some picnic tables as well, because they want to use it kind of as a showcase. So it's gonna be developed before the, the model homes and things, so they want to use it and have it be, look really nice for that. So I think it's gonna be, it's gonna be a good park. The other thing, besides the resolution, is I, I know we talked about this recently, but I would like to develop a list, so that as these parks are developed, we have a list to bring to council. So what I wanted to kind of do is put out to the community and council and city staff and everyone for the next few months, is to email us any ideas you have for parks for the future. That way we can bring it, maybe the protocol can be when we get closer to working on the park, we can bring it to council. Everybody can look at it, not that we can't add to it, or if it's a certain area, something will fit, we can add to that. But at least we'll have some type of protocol, because we've been kind of naming parks as we go. And I feel like it'd be nice to have more community input like we used to have on park names, so. If council is in favor of that, I'd like to kind of get that going.
All right, thank you. Any questions before I put it out to the public?
Just in favor of both of those, no other comments.
All right, thank you. Are there any public comments? All right. All right, thank you. I bring it back to the council for consideration.
Make a motion, we approve item eleven-point-one to name our park Bruin Park.
I'll second it.
We have motion to approve item eleven-one in a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four-zero.
Eleven-two, a resolution approving the official name of the Riverbank Emergency Shelter location currently known as Sierra House.
So Mayor and City Council, tonight's discussion is with regards to the official naming of what we have been commonly calling as the Sierra House, due to the location of the home, not due to any other reasoning. So we wanted to go through this opportunity for council to review some of the suggested names as we look to do ribbon cutting for the day-use facility, and for the future ribbon cutting of the shelter itself. So I'm just gonna go through a brief presentation to update everybody on this current status of the Sierra House, and to inform members of the public of the work that the city council has allowed us to do. So just to remind everybody, as part of our strategic plan in February of twenty nineteen, the city council did make it an objective to look at programs, facilities, and other solutions for homeless services. We got some new opportunities for funding through the American Rescue Plan Act, which the city received five-point-nine million. And this allowed us to actually purchase the Sierra House. So the Sierra House is located on the northwest corner of Sierra and Fourth Street. The second was after the purchase of the Sierra House, we were then provided with an opportunity to obtain grant funding for street outreach services and shelter services to be provided at the Sierra House. So far, our street outreach efforts have been provided through Cambridge Academies, who make contact with our homeless individuals, can help conduct baseline needs assessments, provide referrals to health providers, also provide opportunities for our homeless residents to be able to obtain their necessary documents that they may need, such as IDs, social security, birth certificates, so that they may go out and apply for any funding they may be eligible for. And this is our Sierra House as it currently is, is, it is a two-story, three-bedroom, two-bathroom home that we are taking and refurbishing into our first homeless shelter. This is just a quick layout of what the property looks like. So the home located towards the front, facing Fourth Street, and then we will have our modular that sits right behind it in the backyard area. Oh, sorry, faces Sierra, that's why it's called Sierra House. And so this is what it currently looks like. Our architect has finalized all of the plans for the interior remodel of the home. It is currently going through our plan check process, and will be put out to bid within the next couple of weeks. We hope that the slowdown in some of the housing construction will let us have the ability to be able to get a contractor on staff ASAP. This is what our day-use facility layout will look like, so we'll have two showers, and then a room with washers and dryers, will also have a small office space and a space to give meals during the day as well. And so our day-use facility has been delivered to the location, and we are currently working on the utility hookups, as well as the ADA access that needs to be updated from Fourth Street. So we'll have access to it directly from Fourth Street, as well as access directly from Sierra as well. And so with that, in the staff report, we did provide you with the list of initial names that staff had come up with. The majority of these were, were developed by Gabby, so thank you for, for some of those names. And then we do have a couple of names that were provided by city council themselves that, that I've added to this list. So first, Love and Action Home, or Love and Action Shelter, just of course, to signify the city of action with the word action, but also the fact that we are doing this with a measure of love to our residents, whether they be homeless or not. The second set of potential names is with regards to using the word hope. And so looking at Hope Home, or Hope House, with a variety of, you know, ways that hope can be an acronym for, helping other people endure, helping our people endure every day. Home to opportunity, possibility, and empowerment. Having opportunity provides empowerment, and helping others progress every day. So those are all different variations that hope can be an acronym for. Our council member Uribe provided us with Project SOAR, and so SOAR is an acronym for shelter, opportunities, assistance, and respect. Vice Mayor Campbell provided us with Hope Action Shelter. And then Councilmember Hernandez provided another acronym for Hope House or Hope Home. Healing with opportunity, progress, and empowerment. And I'm gonna read a statement that she provided to me, so that you had some background on why she is suggesting that name. And so she is proud of the city council, and how it has advocated for supporting every person in the community. As we continue to grow as a city, so will the needs of the homeless and houseless population. Home, Hope Home is a place for healing through the support of Cambridge and the city alongside the, the person in need. However, they have landed in the situation that they are in, they will come to Hope Home, where they can find healing through opportunity, progress, and empowerment. And so these are some suggested names that you can have the option to discuss or select from, or if there are any other names that the city council may want to bring forward, or members of the public may have their own suggestions.
Okay, my suggestions are Sierra, I like the name Sierra House. So if, I would like to present Sierra House Riverbank Restart Program. Sierra House Riverbank Giving a Helping Hand Up. I like those two phrases, but I really like keeping the house Sierra House.
I agree with Darlene on this, I like the name Sierra House. When we first started, we, what is, what are we trying to accomplish? And this was in our, our meeting with the nonprofits and the faith-based organizations. And we are, you know, restoring a hope, and restoring a dignity to those who don't have it right now. So if we keep Sierra House, and then underneath that, restoring hope, restoring dignity, is meeting the goals of what we were trying to do from the initial. And and if you take a look at some of the other houses or homes around, there's one for Women's Shelter in Modesto, just says the name. Everyone knows what it is. So I want everyone to know Sierra House, a place for restoring hope and dignity. I, the acronyms from, what was it, Home? Well, what was Cambridge out in, you know, helping others sleep tonight, Host House. Those are good. Those are, to me, a little bit cumbersome, but I know what we're trying to do here in 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 Riverbank. And Sierra House is something that the, when we bought it, we named it, and I like that name. So and and this doesn't have to be decided tonight if we want to have additional input about it. Had I, I I must have been asleep at the wheel. I didn't get, Richard, would you like to have an input? I always have an input. But that would be my input because we know where it's at and we know what it's going to do. And that is just my opinion.
I think what the council has already done is pretty monumental, in my opinion. I mean, I, I, all of them are great, right? Everything, we can't go wrong in any of the decisions. I like the Sierra Home. I like all of the ones presented there. And and we're all going to do amazing things with it. I I did suggest the the SOAR one. Got it, got it from Kyle de Jesus, who actually was the first one to help us out, get those outreach services from the county to come in, start coming every month. And so we were having conversations, and so this one came up. And so when you think of SOAR, right, so the acronym, shelter, sense of security, opportunities, all the job skills, life skills, all, all, I just kind of think of like all this stuff that they're going to learn and and take with them throughout life, assistance, all the social services, the support that they're going to get in there and the added stuff that we want to bring, like WIC services and stuff like that. And then the biggest one for me, why it kind of stuck with me is the respect thing, like just kind of, you know, treating our guests with the dignity and respect that they deserve. So I think we're already doing that. And so I, I, like the mayor said, we don't have to decide that now, but that that's kind of where I'm at. Sierra Home, Project SOAR, the two kind of like where I'd like to see it go. But I'd love to hear input from the residents or anybody else.
I'd like to go along with the mayor and Darlene. I can go along with Sierra Home, you know. I think it does do something for us because it gives a location and it's kind of, you know what we're doing with it. So I'll go with that.
I had a question about the day use modular. It's going to have a restroom in it?
Yes, yes. So part of the shower is also a restroom.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, didn't mention this.
Yes, nope, sorry. Yeah, the the focus was the, the focus was the showers. The focus was the showers when. When I discussed it because it is something that our our homeless residents do not currently have easy access to. A lot of them are accessing restrooms through our city parks. So the the showers are going to be an added bonus for them.
Thank you.
Okay. Let's go with public comment. I'm sure you ladies have a comment. No, we don't, we're not going to say Sierra House all crazies.
I love the idea of Sierra House. We all know the location, and this project has been going for quite a while. And the homeless, at this point, they've really kind of lost hope. But I keep telling them, you know, you you got to keep, you've got to keep the faith. It's going to come soon. It's just not as soon as you think it will be. And I had some crazy ideas I had thrown out to Louis. And I told him, I said, you know, I've been working with the homeless since the beginning of the coronavirus here. And I said, what about Louisa's house? It could kind of go for Luigi, for Louis, for Louise. You know, I said, I know, see, I told you it was wacko. You didn't want to hear it. But I really agree with all of you. I love the thought and the name of Sierra House because we do know where it is, and it is of hope. It's a place for them to come to with dignity, with respect, and help them to get back up on their feet out into society. It's a great program, and I would really like to see this happen for them, for their sake. So that's all I have to say, and I thank you, all of you. Thank you.
Thank you for your input. Thank you for what you're doing. Reverend, you have an input?
Yeah, I do. I'd like, I'd like to name Sierra House for the actual name. And then also, as I was listening to everyone and reading the wonderful, what, how it is explained would be part of the vision statement because the vision statement is why the Sierra House exists. And so helping others progress progress every day. You could still include all that in part of its title. You have a name, but then you have a vision statement, and that's what everyone is going to be turned on about is the vision statement.
All right, let's hear the comment from Zoom.
Can you hear me? Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, sorry. Hi, this is Dina, and I just wanted to give a little input, just FYI, on the SOAR program, SOAR. I don't know if you are aware, but the mental health already has a program called SOAR. I don't know if that even matters, but they do. And then, and I, I like, I kind of liked something like a place called Home, Sierra House or Hope House, something like that, I think, too, would be nice.
Okay, any other comments, doctor?
Thank you, Dina. And for those who don't recall, Dina is our representative from Cambridge Academies, who's out here doing a street outreach.
Good thing. All right, any other comments? Would anybody object to Sierra House? And then build on what additions we want to do later on?
Like a vision statement, right? Like Randy said? Yeah, I don't have an issue with that at all.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Okay. I'm going to make a proposal then for right now. We'd like to put in the resolution approving the name Sierra House with the add-on for what we would like to have for identifier to be determined at a later time. So we can move forward, do the ribbon cutting for Sierra House. That's my proposal for the resolution.
And I'll second it.
You got that, Gabby? All right, we have a first and a second on the name for Resolution 11.2. And a second, roll call, please.
Council member Uribe?
Yes.
Council member Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes four zero.
Thank you, thank you all. And and we all are taking great pride in it. That's why we want to make sure it's, it fits it perfectly as we move forward. All right, one thing is lacking tonight is a closed session. So we're going to go for item 12.1, staff comments and reports.
I wanted to make it easy on you all today. So just two comments, of course, inviting all members of the public to our Dia de los Muertos celebration, which is this Friday, October 28. It will be from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in downtown. So we welcome everybody. There's a Catherine and Katrina contest that will be occurring. We will be taking registrations that day for anybody who would like to participate. And then we do have spaces for altars to be constructed, and then we will have a community altar there as well. The second item is our nonprofit grant program will officially be accepting applications as of November 1st. So this is open to any nonprofit that currently provides services to our Riverbank residents. And it can be nonprofits or any faith-based organizations as well. So similar to our COVID-19 nonprofit program, the funding can be used towards providing food assistance, utility assistance, rental assistance, mortgage assistance. In the past, we have had nonprofits that also assist residents with funeral arrangements, et cetera. So all those types of expenses will be allowable under our program as well. We have $140,000 that the city council has set aside. So we are looking to be able to distribute that as much as possible. So depending on the number of grants, we may limit, shorten the amount of of funding that we have available for each different nonprofit. But we would have liked to provide at least $20,000 to each one if possible. So we will be taking applications on a first come, first served basis. And then any further applications that do not receive funding will place them on a waiting list in the event that there's a nonprofit that's not able to accept for one reason or another.
This, will this be under the same criteria as we had before?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. No other staff comment? We could be out of here very soon. All right, well, council member Uribe.
Thank you, mayor. So I don't know if anybody felt that earthquake this morning, but I want to thank the city for participating on that statewide shakeout event. I don't usually advocate for apps, but I downloaded the My Shake app after that meeting, after that event. It's an early warning app. It literally gave us like 20 seconds heads up, like, hey, start, you're going to start to feel some shaking. And I literally grabbed my daughter, and I was like, hey, let's, let's go under the table. Let's play a game over here. And then, you know, then the event happened. So I was like, kind of, kind of glad for that app. So a lot of people got the the little Google alert, but that happened like maybe as it happened or just right after. So if you don't have that app, I I totally recommend it. Second thing I have, so in an effort to advance equality for all, I think we as a council should discuss removing the invocation and then inviting all faith-based religions to make comments during public comment. I think we as a city should remain neutral, and it should and show that clear separation. So I hope we can kind of get that on the agenda for future meetings. November 2nd, I'm excited about this. We're going to be having our first meeting for our health fair. I've been trying to get this thing going since 2020. Then that little thing called COVID hit, and so kind of delayed everything. We had our, all our amazing events for the centennial this year. But we have an opportunity now to get this moving and to actually launch it in April. So I'm looking forward to that meeting. And then finally, of course, November 8th, Election Day. Just get out and vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barbara Martinez?
I want to talk about the Rock, the Walk, Roll and Bike to School Event at California Avenue that it was very successful. And I believe it was the largest number of participants that I have seen. And thanks to the Sheriff's Department of Riverbank Police Services, the teachers, parents and students. We also had Safe Kids Organization from Dr.'s Hospital there. And of course, the collaboration with Casa del Rio. The Lights On Event at California Avenue was another fun event. There were about 350, 375 students that were there in attendance, and there were all kinds of activities, food, games and resource information. And again, thanks to Casa del Rio and the after-school advisors for putting that on. And let's see, the, oh, I attended a presentation on air quality in Stanislaus County presented by Valley Improvement Projects. And there are many reasons why we have poor air quality in our area. And I hope to hear more from Valley Improvement Projects in the near future. I would like to ask that our staff take a look at and evaluate an increase in pay for the city council. Please let us know if this is something that can be done. And let's see, I hope to see everyone at the Dia de los Muertos event on Friday. And Central Valley Community Resources is hosting a Toys for Tots drive, a toy drive and car show on Saturday, November 19 in the Crossroads Save Mart parking lot from 10:00 to 4:00 with the Marines. And the Riverbank Federated Women's Club is selling poinsettias as their annual fundraiser. So see me if you would like to get poinsettias, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
I just would like to comment that it was very nice today at this meeting, seeing the interaction going on with the public because that's what it's all about. And I just want to remind everybody Halloween's here. Be careful. There's that drug that looks like candy. They're putting in bags, and even though bags may be sealed, check your bags because it looks just like candy. And I don't want to see anybody give it to the kids and something happen bad. Thank you.
Thank you. For those that are building in the city of Riverbank, we expect a high-quality construction of homes, whatever we're building, and that if there's a consistent call for the deficiencies are not being corrected, I'd like the city staff to recommend a 30-day stop issuing of permits until a substantial portion of the deficiencies are corrected. I spent a long time speaking to several residents on several occasions about construction on one of our subdivisions that needs attention. I believe we're going to start giving that attention, and we'll hear more about it. If it's not done within 30 days, we should stop issuing until they get it corrected. I'd like the PG&E to give us a presentation to the council and explain their required timeline to provide power to the projects. For example, if we have a project on the east side that's been in planning, construction and development for five years, why, when we have construction completed, ready for occupancy, we're 30 days out from receiving power? So I want them to give us a presentation. Or if they do not have a solution, that we go ahead and issue MID, the permit, and then we go to court on how to provide services to the, to the public. And if that means, I think we're trying to get CPUC. I'd like to have a meeting with them on what is the the protocol on that. And you already heard my consistency in in the requirements and, you know, the appropriate timeline that we have to have for responses, the code enforcement. If there is a code enforcement violation, we need to jump on that right away. And we have to be consistent. If there's a, can, if there is a continual violation, they're going to say, well, my neighbor did that, my neighbor did that, and it's exponential of what we have to do. So we have to educate, be proactive, and then adjudicate. So we really do, I, you and I have talked about this, I know. The other thing is that I've looked at my calendar, and there's a lot of things that are lacking. Sue, I confuse your event on Friday with another event I had. So it's not neither one on my calendar. So I'd like to have events that are coming on up through Parks and Recs and others put on my, I believe everybody wants it on their calendars. So we don't overbook or underbook or, because it is important for us to participate. And I misunderstood. I'll be there Friday. Okay, with that, the next city council meeting will be held on November 8th at 2020, uh, November 8th, 2022 at 6:00 p.m. The second meeting in November will be canceled. That would have been held on November 22nd. This time, this meeting is now adjourned.